It being a little after seven o'clock, I call this meeting to order in temporary place of our chair, Mr. Nugent. The first order of business is citizen comments. Seeing no citizens hereby assembled, we will pass on that item. Next item is approval of the minutes from the April 18th Planning Commission meeting. Do I hear a motion or any discussion?
Moved to approve.
Moved and approved. We'll have a vote. Who, all in favor of approving the minutes, raise your hand?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Next item is the Neighborhood Business Zone Review. So I welcome our city staff, Lori and Debbie.
Okay.
Please take it away.
So if you wouldn't mind raising your screens, and while that's going on, we can kind of just chat briefly. So tonight's the second meeting where you're going to be discussing the Neighborhood Business Zone. And so we'll be responding to the comments that you brought up at your last meeting, and kind of coming up with a sort of a draft proposal regard around uses for those two areas. If you manage to get through that this evening, we might be able to cancel the May 16th meeting. Now, there's an incentive for you. Yes, you heard me right. If you get through it tonight, we may not need to hold a second meeting in May, because we'd have already kind of got through the discussion tonight. But we obviously have that meeting available. However, on May 15th, we are hosting an affordable housing event here at City Hall. So that's Monday, the 15th, at seven o'clock, and it's sort of a celebration of affordable housing successes. So we will be having a panel who will be talking about different aspects of affordable housing and their involvement. For example, there'll be a private, you know, a developer from the private development community who will be talking about examples of how affordable housing has been incorporated into private development. There'll be a nonprofit there, you know, Housing Development Consortium, and a couple of others. And it'll be moderated by Arthur Sullivan. So essentially, it will be sort of a presentation format. There'll be an opportunity for questions. And so being as sort of the housing strategy is on your work program, I would certainly encourage you to attend that event if you're able. So that would be on May 15th at seven. And again, I realize then that may mean you may have two meetings that week on the 15th and on the 16th. But if you do get through everything tonight, you may only have one meeting on the 15th. So that's kind of, I just wanted to kind of put that in front of you while I remember.
Thank you.
So now, we'll turn it over to Lori, who has the PowerPoint kind of walkthrough for tonight.
Good evening. So I have, as Debbie mentioned, a brief PowerPoint here. And what I would like to do is just to go through the PowerPoint, which describes in more detail the materials that you received in your packet. It provides some summary information that I think you'll find useful. If you want copies of the slides, obviously, we can send those out after the meeting. So just let me know as we move along. So the first slide here talks about the vision for the Neighborhood Business Areas. You know, there are two of these areas, one at Northeast 153rd Place and one at Northeast 170th along Juanita. And the vision in quotes came from my notes, at least, from the April 18th meeting. So I hope I captured your comments. And those comments were that for the north part of the Neighborhood Business Zone, that's again at Northeast 170th, the commission felt that that was a better place to handle traffic. It was at a major intersection. That meeting daily needs of surrounding residents was important, but that that area is also within walking distance of downtown. So that it should perhaps have more of a commercial focus, and it's maybe more akin to the Community Business Zone, which is also just right outside the downtown. There was some suggestion that a pedestrian orientation might be important, given the improvements we expect along Juanita Drive, and that allowing standalone multifamily at that location was maybe not the best choice. Any reactions to that? Did I miss any important thoughts there from that discussion? All right. For the South Neighborhood Business Zone, so this one again is at Northeast 153rd Place. Again, it was felt that meeting daily needs was important, but that Northeast 153rd Place is not a thoroughfare, although it sounded like Commissioner Mulcair knew that limited bus service was provided in that area. The area is underdeveloped, and you had asked me to check and see on hazardous, see about hazardous cleanup. I think, I can't remember who asked that, maybe Scott McDonald. So I went to the Department of Ecology, and I finally tracked down the information. So at both of those two nodes, there used to be gas stations, not just at 153rd, but also at 170th. The 170th gas station cleanup has been completed, and they received a letter from the Department of Ecology that said that no further cleanup was required. The gas station cleanup at Northeast 153rd has not been completed, and I think that's probably why that lot is vacant with the, some of the, I think there are storage containers on that property. So that, in fact, for a new development to go in there, there would be, have to be some sort of a cleanup, cleanup take place. So other comments that were made, that you may see more customers at that particular location, particularly with the development of the lodge at St. Edward State Park. And then there was a question about whether this South Neighborhood Business Zone, however it's ultimately configured, could be a model for other small commercial areas in the city. So any reactions to that, those comments?
I just have a question on the environmental cleanup.
Yeah.
Is somebody responsible for that?
The property owner, right. The letter was addressed to, and I assume that that person is still the property owner. The letter went out in 2013 that stated that a cleanup was required, but I don't know what the timeline is for that, whether they can wait until it's time to redevelop, or how that actually has to happen.
You say a model for other small commercial areas in the city. I don't have the zoning map right in front of me, but which are you thinking?
We don't have any. This was an idea that had come up, it's just come up in sort of general conversation. Would it be worth it for the city ever to consider small, a very small commercial node in our residential zoning districts? That's kind of where it's come up, like, would it be appropriate to have something like a corner store, or something like that, like one of these small nodes elsewhere in the city? That would certainly be, that would be a major work program item. I'm not sure that the community has any desire to pursue that, but it did come up, because one strategy would be to say, let's just get rid of neighborhood business altogether. Another strategy would be to say, well, could you do something that would really allow, retain a zone that might, in the future, as times change, or not be useful?
So more conceptual then?
It's more conceptual. Right, correct. All right. And then the only other comment I wanted to make, this sort of applies to both the South and North. I felt that the majority of commissioners thought that auto repair with accessory sales, not standalone sales, but they were accessory sales of cars that had been repaired or refurbished. It was expressed that that was, in fact, a neighborhood asset, that people didn't have to have their car towed as far, et cetera. And then the other comment that was made was that retail businesses now may have a significant online component, and that may influence perspectives about storage, outdoor storage, indoor storage, et cetera. So any reactions to that? Did I capture your thoughts, or not so much?
In reading through things, it's hard to keep everything coordinated in my mind. But with regard to the auto repair site, there was something about somewhere not allowing tow-ins to occur. And that may have been a self-standing parking lot issue.
Right. I think that was probably transportation towing companies, or, yes, it could also have been standalone parking. There may have been a footnote associated with that, about no tow-in lots for damaged cars.
To be sure that we weren't including a service site for taking tow-ins, because they do.
No, I would say that part of auto service is probably having someone tow a vehicle to a service station. On the other hand, a tow-in lot, where somebody was towing a car to a lot, that is a transportation use, and that would not be permitted. So you couldn't set up a tow lot where you towed in, for your own business, your big tow, towing, or whatever, and you're towing in 20 cars and impounding them until people can come pay and get their car released. That's different.
I had a question about auto repair with accessory sales. Maybe it's jumping ahead a little bit, but I noticed in, I guess, the draft, for, I think, both the North and the South zones, you had automotive sales is prohibited.
Correct.
What's the definition of automotive sales? I think it came up maybe at the last meeting, that, you know, there's a guy with a repair shop, and, you know, occasionally he'll sell cars.
Right.
What constitutes an actual automotive sale operation?
Right. So the difference would be, if you had an auto repair business, and you repaired a car, and the owner no longer wanted it, or the owner said, you know, I've been wanting to get rid of this car for months, can you put it on your lot, because people with cars come see you? You could make an argument that that's an accessory use. And an accessory use is a use that's maybe commonly associated with a business. It's usually, it's a subservient use, so it's not the predominant use. It would be smaller in nature. And it can be a prohibited use. An accessory use can be a prohibited use. And when we were doing the Regional Business Zone, an example we gave of that was Kenmore Air. So Kenmore Air has a jail. And a jail is not a permitted use in that zoning district, but they have to have one for custom purposes, customs purposes. So, but it's like a tiny room, that's an accessory use. So if somebody had three or four cars at their business, and they were selling them, I wouldn't be the person making the call. Development Services would do that. But I would anticipate that that was an accessory use. Now, contrast that with somebody who has maybe one bay that, I don't know what they do, or even like a car wash or something, and the whole site is car sales. So cars, it advertises auto sales, there's no significant repair business on site. At that point, you say, this isn't an accessory use, this is the primary use. And the repair, in fact, is an accessory. Or you don't have any repair, and it's just a car lot. That for sure is an auto sales use. Does that help?
That does help. It seems like it's still maybe a little squishy.
Yeah, it's always squishy.
If it's always squishy, I guess we can accept that. I think Mike might remember, we were going, we were doing the regional business, and there was the gentleman down at the end, end here, who wanted to, I think, sell like classic, you may remember that too.
Right.
Like refurbished cars, and I guess we, didn't we, or it was finally, I guess, determined that he, that would be a sale.
It was a sale. Right, right.
Because it was his primary.
Yeah, selling the cars.
Purpose of that particular property.
Right, right.
So are we just gonna have to, I guess, live with a little bit of squishiness in this?
I think you have to live with squishiness unless you want to get really prescriptive, and you want to say something like, no more than five cars maybe on a given property for sale, or, you know, somehow put a number limit of some sort on it, or can't, sales can't occupy more than 5% of the footage of the use. I don't know, you'd have to go to some really prescriptive thing to define that. And you certainly could do that. That's something you could do. It's not typically the way it has in other zones been handled.
Right. Well, since there are several, you know, existing repair and I guess accessory sales places there, it's, does fellow commissioners have any thoughts on, that maybe it's too early to start, you know, throwing out numbers, but any thoughts on that point, and any, about clarity, or do we need it, or any?
I like squishy.
I think at this point, we're trying to come up with what our vision for the Neighborhood Business Zones would be, and squishy seems to be a better way to go about it, because then you're not zeroing in on a particular style of business, or singling out a business that presently is there to create your policies, which I think would not be fair to the leasing if they don't own the land, or to the landowner who has a less, you know, a lease with somebody who has this type of business. But I think what we're generally doing is just coming up with, you know, if we make these Neighborhood Business Zones, what do they look like? You know, they're going to have these permitted, conditional permitted, and prohibited descriptions that aren't specific. But, you know, that's from now going into the future. How it affects a present piece of property, what would the rules of that effect of a new policy be on a, on a present situation?
Right, we'll go into that.
Okay.
That's farther along in the slides.
I think just in general, though, Kenmore is poised for growth, and we're poised for change, and being able to try to anticipate what that change is while we go through this exercise, I think is really helpful. Having grown up in Seattle and watched kind of the rollout of, you know, high-density housing in favored neighborhoods, I mean, there's a lot of businesses that just don't exist anymore in Seattle, because the land is worth more to have residential. I think that's what's gonna happen within the walking distances of any kind of commuter accessibility to our transit. And both of these little small business zones fall in that, and potentially could be part of any future thing that the transit does. So that's gonna make it more valuable for maybe a developer to come in with high-density housing. But I wouldn't want to get rid of the business factor. I mean, it's, it's an interesting look right now.
I think we talked about that fairly in-depth last week, right? That the market will determine the ultimate best use of these properties. They've remained, at least the South area that we've been talking about, has remained fairly undeveloped for a long period of time, even as multifamily has happened to round it. And that's why we asked about the environmental impact of that one lot, because that's remained vacant for so long, that we wondered what were some of the limiting factors there. And this doesn't prohibit residential, this doesn't prohibit.
I think we're kind of getting ahead of.
Yep. I do have a question, and also I'll abandon that.
And I'm gonna talk about multifamily.
Yeah. I do have a question, though, I think relevant to our squishy conversation, which is a fun one. So as we define these different use cases, and prohibited and conditional, et cetera, what are the avenues of address that one could have if a business operates outside of the use cases that we define, or the city enacts?
So I can take two approaches to that question, and I'm not sure which one you're most interested in. If, for example, there were a new type of use that didn't seem to fit in with the defined uses, is that kind of what, part of your question? So say somebody, new innovative business, and we don't know what it is, or where it fits, it's something uniquely new, just like.
Let's take a scenario that's relevant to our past conversation. Let's say someone's in the automotive repair business, and suddenly, it goes from two cars for sale in front to 12.
Okay. So that's, that's a different question. That has to do with nonconformance, and permitted and prohibited uses. And so, nonconformance, we definitely need to talk about, and I've specifically focused on that use. So we can either talk about it now, or you can hold that thought, and then we can get to it. It's like the last slide I've got.
Okay.
What's your preference?
I don't care when we talk about it. The part of it I'm interested in is whether it's a previous nonconforming use, or a new business that's operating outside of the uses that we define. If somebody puts in a brewery, or a marijuana collective. What are the avenues of address? Who has rights underneath?
Okay, so if somebody comes in and establishes a prohibited use, they don't have any rights. They are, a notice of violation goes out, and they have to move. And a marijuana business would be an example. There are very limited places in the city where that can occur. If a marijuana business tried to locate in the Neighborhood Business Zone where it's prohibited, they would receive a notice of violation, they would have to vacate the property. They would be what's called an illegal nonconformance. They were never legal to begin with, and they have no rights. If they really wanted to pursue that business in that location, their option is to come to the city and apply for a comprehensive plan and/or zoning amendment. And that's a process that happens once a year, and a private citizen can apply for that. And then it goes into the hopper with all the other things that are on the City Council and work program and Planning Commission docket, and the council decides whether they want to entertain that idea or not. And if they want to, then it comes, in that case, it would come to the Planning Commission to make a decision and review the issues. If they decided they didn't want to do it, the person, that's it, they don't have any other choice.
Okay. So can only the city bring an action of a violation in that case?
Well, the city could bring it, or we could receive a complaint from a surrounding property owner that would initiate that.
Okay. And if a business owner objects or denies the claims the city makes, they say, we're not selling marijuana, this is de-nutured hemp seed? Maybe that's a thing, I don't know.
There'd be an investigation.
Okay.
I mean, it would go through a regular code violation process.
Okay.
And in a code violation situation, I think if you still disagree with the city's code violation action, I think that can be appealed to the city's hearing examiner.
Okay.
And then, oh, and then to court.
So there's a framework for this that already exists, and we just need to plug this business districts, this new Neighborhood Business Districts appellate process, or appeal process? We plug it into an existing framework?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And where I was going with that, the first part, when I was responding to you about a new business that's undefined, like your hemp business, maybe it doesn't fit into any of our categories. We'll just make an assumption that it doesn't, for purposes of illustration. So then, the process is that the person comes to the city and says, I have a use that doesn't fit anywhere. And there's already a code process for the Development Services Director to look at the, all the characteristics of that business, and determine which use is closest in nature to that use, and then you plug that into the same process.
Right. Okay.
Any further points on this? Go ahead.
Going back to the automotive sales and service issue.
Yeah.
On our table A here, this is your exhibit one, you show that as a condition permitted call.
Correct.
Is that what we want? Or is that just what it is now?
That's not what it is now. Now, it's outright permitted. So my recommendation was that it would be conditionally permitted, and again, we're gonna talk about that, because it's certainly not my call, it's your call. But we'll talk about what the ramifications of that are, moving to that approach.
Okay. And someone just related to this, we have this multiple family dwelling in a mixed-use development.
Correct.
Which I think is primarily, meaning the lower level, might be available for.
Something else, office, retail, personal service.
I don't know what the history is of those type of facilities, and how long it takes to sort of fill those leases. And I tend to see that they're often sit, unused for a long time.
Right.
But that's still the case or not. But I'm wondering if we go that approach, whether we might consider permitting temporary uses on an annual basis, if they don't have any other use or request for that use. And I don't know what it fits, but I'm sitting here thinking, well, you know, they shouldn't sit open. Maybe they could use it even if they had backside access for, let's say, additional car parking if they wanted, as long as they screened it or whatever, so you couldn't see into it. But if it was on a temporary basis, you'd be able to, they would know that this is a possibility, because you have no income otherwise, but it's not something that we want to encourage.
Right. So Chair Nugent raised that concern at the last meeting about mixed use, and again, we've, I think we've probably all seen buildings where the apartments are built, and the storefronts are still not leased. And we had a little bit of discussion about how that they, that in many of those cases, they are making so much money from the apartments, that actually, they don't have to lease it, and the project is still profitable. But I think this is an important question for how we want to treat multifamily in these two areas, and I'm recommending that they be treated differently between the North and the South areas.
Thank you. So, just concentrating on your first vision slide here, I think you've accurately captured the difference between the North and the South. So I like that. Specific to the South side, I'm eager to get into the discussion of multifamily. I'm, in thinking about this some more, I'm concerned about seeing that undeveloped area remain undeveloped into the future, because zoning may restrict the type of development that it actually be successful there. And particularly knowing now that whoever was considering using those sites is going to have to deal with the contaminated site, they're gonna have to have a pretty profitable project to even want to get into that. So I think, and I don't pretend to be an expert in this, but I don't see a small, single-level retail strip mall as being what is likely to be, going onto the site there would be successful. You're almost going to have to do some kind of multifamily. Whether or not you did it, mixed use, you get into this question we just had here. But I think, in my own mind, I would like to do whatever we can to maximize the potential for that undeveloped area, which is really quite unsightly, having that developed within the reasonable future, and zoning it so that somebody could actually do something there successfully.
Okay. So if you don't mind, I think we can keep going, and we're gonna get into the meat of the matter here, and look at a summary of the charts. And they do, they are part of Attachment 1, so it's, we're gonna start with. they are part of attachment one. So, it's, we're going to start with the north neighborhood business area. So, as you recall, at the end of the last meeting, we talked about how I should take for a template for the north business area, the community business zone, whereas for the south area, I was going to retain the neighborhood business zone as my template. So, you can see here that the north recommendation is based on the community business zoning chart. And in fact, as it's currently written, I had recommended it as like a subarea of the community business zone. So, there's like a main community business zone along 181st and this would be a Juanita subarea of the community business zone. Again, fitting more in that role of supporting downtown. And so, the recommendations for auto-related businesses and auto and multifamily were two of the topics that came up last time. So, I've sort of focused on that. But I'm recommending that auto-related businesses, rather than being a permitted use, become a conditional use, still retaining the notion that there are no sales permitted and all the work is to be conducted indoors. Those are current standards. So, the existing uses would become nonconforming as to process. And what that means is that in order for them to expand or intensify, they would have to finally get a conditional use permit, which they don't have now. And that would allow the city to look at things like screening or maybe even how much accessory sales you could have. It would provide a broader venue with public input if those businesses wanted to do more than they're doing now. The reason I'm interested in making it a conditional use is that if we don't make it a conditional use, I think I heard clearly, you don't want to make it a prohibited use. But our only other choice is to make it a permitted use and that means that the whole area, it won't happen, but it could, the whole area would become auto sales or auto service uses. So, every parcel there would, could become an auto service use. And I'm not sure that that's quite what you had in mind either. So, new auto-related businesses still could be permitted potentially, but would have to go through the conditional use permit process. So, questions about that?
I think I would still like to look, see if we can do it on a permitted basis.
So, make auto service a permitted use?
Yes.
I think, okay, that will be a discussion with your fellow commissioners. So, you might want to get some perspectives there. So, I have some good direction because this is, I mean, this is a significant issue.
So, basically what I hear you saying, Dennis, is that you would like for auto services to become a prohibited land use. Is that what you said? No, you want it to be permitted?
Permitted, yes.
But not a conditional use permit?
Right.
So, just in the permitted category, which I'm assuming it is now, correct?
Correct.
So, that would not change. However, your recommendation is it would change to a conditional use permit. Could you give us a little bit of your thinking about why you'd want to see it that way?
Yeah. So, just to recap, I think, I think that those two areas, their fundamental purpose that I thought I heard was that this is to satisfy the daily needs of people nearby. And currently, there's a pretty good mix of retail and personal services and there's a veterinary hospital and there are the auto uses and there's a restaurant. So, there's a pretty good mix of things that can serve the surrounding community. And I felt that the potential, once something is a permitted use, they don't have to get any land use permit from the city. They can just come in and do what they want. And I felt that allowing that opportunity for auto service could be a problem if other parcels there were to decide, okay, we want to be auto service too and we're going to have a little auto service area here. And really, all our uses are going to be auto service. And that doesn't feel to me like a community business or a neighborhood business zone. So, by making a conditional use, you say, well, it may be okay, but it's conditionally okay. So, we want the community to have an opportunity to comment. We want the ability to put limits or constraints on the use if there's something that we know about its operation that we don't think is appropriate. So, it just puts a tighter control over new businesses that might come to the area.
I guess I'm going to keep talking on that. If we're looking at this as being market-driven, that's, it could happen that you could have more of that type of activity. But at the same token, as been commented, if we, somebody who actually is thinking about a multi-facility use, well, the market will drive either them out of the business or allow them to figure out how to work if they have a business development on the lower floor. I mean, the question is how much do we want to impose our will or how much do we want to let the market decide which way it's going to go? That's only my viewpoint.
The other uses in that area right now, are they all permitted uses? So, is the restaurant?
The restaurant is permitted, the retail, the healthcare, the personal service. Right, those are all permitted uses.
And we're not proposing to change that, so?
No.
So, we're, essentially, we're singling out auto-related businesses to be treated differently.
Correct.
So, that's our, that's our policy decision. Do we want to encourage other uses or not dis, I guess discourage is probably the, we're putting up some sort of, maybe a thin barrier, but it's still a more, more restriction to that particular use.
Correct.
So, that's our question.
So, for context...
Strong opinion on it either way. But I see the concern. I don't think we would want that area to become dominated by, if it became dominated by restaurants, I don't think anybody would mind that. Probably most people would think that would be a good thing. If it became dominated by veterinary hospitals, I don't know, but that doesn't seem likely. But it does seem likely that you could see more auto-related businesses go in there. And I guess, just thinking out loud, when I think about that area, going back to our earlier conversation, I think the natural tendency is going to be for that area to be subsumed within the central business district. And probably without all the things being equal, it's probably going to look a lot like the downtown if that's allowed to happen, which means you're going to have a pretty good mix of retail down there. So, I think anything that allows that natural flow to happen is a good thing. I don't see necessarily auto-related businesses. What, is there a restriction on auto-related businesses in the central business?
Yeah.
Downtown?
Yeah. The businesses along SR 522 that are in the downtown zone are considered existing legal. They're given a special classification and allowed to continue, but they're prohibited elsewhere.
Thank you. Because that was my remembrance of the conversation we had. And I think having consistency in that area with the rest of the central business district is worth retaining. If we want that, if we think that area really is going to be part of the central business district without too much time, then I think we ought to have consistent zoning and permitting in that area as well. Otherwise, we're spinning into mix. So, why would that area be different? That leads me to wanting to have the same zoning for auto-related businesses in this area as it is in central business.
Go ahead, Carol.
I did listen to your meeting last time and it sounds like as the city moves forward this year, there is a need to streamline our zoning and make all the language simplified so we really do have a more general plan. Is your move towards automotive services from the permitted to the conditional use category part of that?
No.
Not, it's not. It's just looking at this little neighborhood business zone and thinking through what direction is our vision? Where do we want to go? Having grown up in the automotive aftermarket, family-oriented businesses, I can tell you that just market value of putting a brand-new business like this in, it is cost prohibitive just because of the regulation. It would take so much money for them to be able to buy out, say, the veterinary hospital and the whole strip mall next to them to be able to expand their business. Just from a market analysis viewpoint, I doubt that would happen. But you could encourage, basically what you're doing is you're encouraging certain types of use of that small business zone by just emphatically stating, that's not the direction our vision is going. Is that correct?
I would say I'm not emphatically stating that. If I felt that I was emphatically stating that, I would have made it a prohibited use.
Oh, sure.
That would have been my recommendation.
Okay.
And that's not. I didn't hear that anybody wanted to make it a prohibited use. This is a middle step. It's a middle step between making it permitted everywhere in the zone and we know it's very small and saying it's not permitted in the zone. So, right, that was my...
Go ahead, Dennis.
I think I'm not following the idea that this is going to be like the commercial business zones that we've been developing. And I'm not sure that's where we would want it to go. And if this, let's say this auto service function got priced out of the market even by going to the conditional use issue or permanent, I mean, yeah, conditional use process, that's an extra expense. And I'm not hearing that they make a lot of money. So, are we then wanting to not have that service available to the neighborhood? And it isn't necessarily just the people in that immediate neighborhood in terms of single-family residents. People from all over, I think, can more go to that particular, and I'm not trying to protect them in and of themselves, but there aren't a lot of options available. And it just seems to me we've got to figure out a way to permit these low-profit service-type industries to exist. And I'm more than comfortable with letting the market decide that, but I don't want to add to the cost of it because they are low-profit.
Right. And I just want to clarify that nothing would change as far as the existing businesses would go. If they wanted to continue the way they are for the next 20 years with this change, there would be no impact. It would only come into play if they were wanting to do something else. If they wanted to expand their business, they wanted to build more, a new business wanted to come in. That's the point at which the conditional use would apply.
But maybe they do want another bay for the service.
Yep.
And then that, it's a horrendous process to go through conditional use, even though you might be successful.
It's true.
That's my concern.
Well, it's administrative. So, let's talk about the conditional use permit process, which is an application to the city. And yes, you have to pay for permanent. It is expensive. But then the development services director makes the decision after written public notice and public, written public comments are received. There's no public hearing. It's not the hearing examiner. It's an administrative decision that can be appealed to the hearing examiner if you don't like the outcome. So, it's not, you don't have to go before the city council or anything like that.
So, what is the fee?
I can't tell you. I want to say it's like $2,000 maybe. I don't know. I can bring that back, certainly.
That might be a useful point of information. I personally tend to agree with Mike that I think this particular zone should be consistent with the downtown zone. It strikes me also as almost, you know, an accessory or an adjunct to the central zone. So, could you clarify again what auto services, what's their status now in the downtown regional?
Which zone are you talking about?
Well, I know there's multiple.
The downtown commercial zone or the community business zone? Because this has been looking at as being comparable to the community business zone, which is the zone along 181st. The downtown commercial zone, for example, is what you see across the street with the new Link building and things like that. And the buildings along 522 are downtown commercial. So, which, so to make sure that we kind of give you the correct response, or we can maybe tell you how auto sales and service are looked at in both zones. In the downtown commercial zone, there are several existing auto-related businesses. And when the downtown commercial zone went into effect in 2003, it recognized that those existing businesses could stay as existing legal permitted uses. It prohibited new auto uses in the downtown commercial zone. In the community business zone, it's prohibited. So, there's a slight difference in there because there are no, there were no existing auto uses along 181st. So, when that zone went into effect, they said auto uses in that zone did not fit with the vision, so therefore were a prohibited use. So, that's the distinction between the two.
So, is it true then that what is being proposed here is actually more, you know, lenient than is, for auto uses than is currently in the, in the commercial business district?
Yes.
And can I ask, what is the designation of the businesses that are just on the other side of the 68th Street Bridge? There's a set of, I think, professional offices in there, a tax accountant, a bridal gown shop?
That's all, it's called regional business zone.
Okay. So, that...
And there are three subareas to the regional business zone.
Okay. And that's one of them.
Right. Well, it incorporates other parcels as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did you, did you want to know what the...
No, I was just thinking about the continuity because Mike had said earlier that he thought that this north or what we've been talking about, this north area of the neighborhood business zone was in some ways an extension of the downtown or commercial business district. But it does have that regional business district sort of interlaced in there.
Right, but I don't...
One set of rules too. And I don't know how far that extends, if it extends to the very first set of shops that has the tanning salon and the homebrew store and the exterminator and the auto repair store right on the corner of 522 and 68.
Right. So, that, I think that's all regional business. And I think I can call up the zoning map. And I had a note, or we can pull the, do you want to wrap the code and we can look at regional business?
Do you happen to know if regional business, how that treats automotive?
Yeah, it's limited to certain areas. And I want to say that it's limited to the east side of 68.
Yeah, it is included in your colored map. You can pick out which one.
Right. This was, I think, was that included in your last packet?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at right now.
So, we're looking up how regional business zone in that particular area treats.
Yeah.
So, the little map is...
So, yeah, it's all north and west.
So, regional business north is the corner parcels and then that's regional business west.
Okay. Basically, you're making a provision for these neighborhood business zones, but we're defining them a little bit tighter.
Well, we're defining them differently.
Differently.
In some ways more liberally and other ways more conservatively.
Right. But staying consistent with what the vision is coming out from...
Hopefully.
Well, I know that...
That's the goal.
That's the goal. But, you know, you don't know what the unintended consequences are.
Right.
I think, you know, we're after having services available for daily use, and there is an advantage of not having to drive to Bellevue to get your car repaired, right?
Right, I think everybody agreed to that, which is why we didn't prohibit the use.
Right.
So can we put a hold on this prohibited conditional permitted use and keep going so that I can get through the rest of this?
Yeah.
And then we'll come back to these key questions. This is one of my, uh, key questions. So I just want to over, do an overview of the rest because I, I think we're going to lose some of these other things, and they're all interrelated.
Okay.
So we're still talking about the north portion of the neighborhood business zone. So there are some other uses in the staff recommendation that would become prohibited. They would be newly prohibited. And again, this is based on the community business zone. So family childcare home and single-family residence would become prohibited uses. And that is because they were allowable uses in the community business zone because there are some existing single-family residences, and you can't have a family childcare home unless you have a single-family residence. So the two go together. And because there aren't any existing single-family residences, staff is recommending it become prohibited. Utility facility is now prohibited since it seems likely there are other more neighborhood-friendly uses that could go in those small commercial zones. And then two large uses, college/university and regional land use, move into the prohibited column, just based on their scale.
Okay.
Uh, the newly conditional uses, besides, again, the auto service that we just talked about, uh, one is standalone parking, um, to determine whether that's the best use of the property and to consider things like screening. So this would be like a standalone, uh, parking lot, although it may be limited to commuter parking. I need to see if I put in that footnote as it is currently. Right, it's, uh, limited to commuter parking lot. Uh, light manufacturing, which is currently a prohibited use, uh, and we've had a lot of discussion about how light manufacturing, which doesn't have adverse impacts, uh, that would be, again, brewery, winery, jewelry maker, et cetera. It's more artisanal manufacturing. Thought it was appropriate to move it from prohibited into conditional. And then vehicle refueling station, again, the two gas stations went out, but vehicle refueling station also talks about electrical, electric vehicle charging. So whether, or it could be any other kind of futuristic automobile refueling thing. And then as far as newly permitted, mobile food service, not currently addressed. We thought it had to go somewhere, and, uh, the whole food truck notion felt akin to the allowance for eating and drinking place, so we put it in the permitted column.
I see.
Okay. So maybe what I should do, let me go all the way through, and then we can come back to each of these slides, and you can give me some reaction. Does that seem okay? All right. So in, again, this is only the north for multifamily development. Uh, the recommendation is that you no longer be able to do standalone townhomes. So that would mean that you couldn't, uh, as you could currently, do a standalone townhome development. And the staff recommendation for that is that, um, we felt that it was more important probably to have a higher density housing, thinking again, the relationship to downtown. Uh, this is where that question about whether multifamily should only be allowed in mixed use or standalone multifamily of some sort would be more appropriate. Okay, so the south neighborhood business zone. Again, this one's based on the existing neighborhood business chart. So auto-related businesses, identical treatment as to the north business zone. Again, there are several existing businesses there as there are in the north. So, uh, it was consistent between those two. Other proposed changes in the south area, there are more newly prohibited uses. So air transportation service, which is like a helipad or, um, I suppose, a small private airport. Um, outdoor arts and entertainment, secure facility, which is a jail, and transportation, again, which is something like a towing lot or, uh, taxi business, um, because of potential adverse impacts on surrounding residential areas. Those are uses that might not be compatible with those residential areas. And I think you all had a greater sense of the surrounding residential nature of that south node. You seemed more protective of that. So cemetery, et cetera, standalone parking and utility facility would be prohibited. Again, it's a small node, and there may be other, uh, uses, retail, personal service, et cetera, that you would want focused there. And then those two big uses, college/university and regional land use, uh, would be prohibited. Again, light manufacturing would be newly, uh, conditional. Previously, all manufacturing was prohibited, and the same treatment for mobile food service. A difference comes in the treatment of multifamily. So in the south zone, uh, I did not recommend eliminating the ability to do standalone townhomes. That, uh, I think we talked a little bit about allowing multifamily down in that. Uh, but apartments, again, would have to be in mixed use, so we may want to revisit that topic, depending on how you feel about it. So, nonconformance, uh, the only things, again, that would become nonconforming would be those automotive service uses. There are limitations in size on retail, personal service. They can, they're limited to like 5,000 square feet, and they can only be 15,000 square feet contiguous. In the north, uh, sub-area mimicking the community business zone, I went through and, um, looked at the size of those existing buildings, and there, and the restaurant has that same limitation. They would not become nonconforming. So that is not an issue for those existing, uh, businesses. And then, uh, a question, uh, I had two questions, and then we also have these use questions, the multifamily and the auto service questions. But the questions that came to my mind were, should the size limitations on uses, again, that 5,000 square foot per use, 15,000 square foot total, be transferred to the south neighborhood business area? Why are those limitations in place? It's so you don't have a big store. What you're looking for are a series of small storefronts. It's more scale of fulfillment. And then the question of outdoor storage. Should outdoor storage be permitted or prohibited in these areas? And, and that would be a, the way that's handled currently is that those, that would be a specific statement in the zone. Outdoor storage is permitted, and then there are standards, or outdoor storage is not permitted. And the definition of outdoor storage is storage of materials outside a completely enclosed building for more than 24 hours, including items for sale, lease, shipment, processing, maintenance, or repair. And it does include vehicles and equipment and items used in business operations. I don't think that includes vehicles for sale, but, um, we would need perhaps to clarify that. Okay, so that was my little effort. So we had, it sounds like we have at least four things to discuss. Um, we probably have the answer for auto sales.
So for the regional business zone, how it's addressed for auto? So there, um, I guess there are two zones. So for the parcels on the west side of 1E2 Drive, um, north of 175th, those are the north sub-area for regional business. And those... Those say, so automotive sales and service for marine is a permitted use, with a footnote that on the size of, um, sales lots not to exceed 20,000 square feet. Automotive sales and service non-marine are permitted. And again, um, automotive... Automotive sales are prohibited. The service of trucks exceeding a eight-ton capacity and heavy equipment is prohibited. So there's sort of a distinction there on what you can do. And then for the parcels, then, um, the rest of the parcels, south of 175th, on the west side of 68 are regional business. The west sub-area, and that speaks to automotive sales and service marine is permitted, subject to a footnote of performing service in an enclosed building with no outdoor storage. And then for, um, non-marine is a prohibited use. So again, it's the, whether it's, uh, marine-related or non-marine, it's either, it's handled a little bit differently. That's for the regional business. Hopefully, I didn't confuse everybody too much with that.
But, but in the commercial business, it's still prohibited auto service and sales, as Laurie said. So you're distinguishing between regional business and community business, just to be clear.
Right, so what I just described to you was how it's handled in the regional business in those two zones, the west regional business, west and regional business north. In community business, it's prohibited. In downtown commercial, um, the existing, um, sales and service are classified as existing legal. So I think that's sort of covered the gamut of, um, anything downtown-related.
Go ahead, Dennis.
I do find some of this a little hard to keep straight. But I'm not totally sure of the reason for excluding what you called university and colleges. I understand they're way too big, and that's fine. But why wouldn't you allow sort of a storefront, um, learning center of some sort?
Yeah, that actually, um, that came up in the regional business zoning project when we were defining uses. And if you look to the definition of college or university, it does not include sort of corollary uses that might be located off the campus. And the example we used was like a bookstore. Maybe a college wants to have a bookstore, and they want it to be off the campus. That would be treated as a retail use, not a college/university use. So the college/university is really the campus, basically. And then if you have a corollary, um, uh, facility, and in your case, if, if it were a small learning center, that would be like probably an educational service. Uh, that would, is where that would fall. And, um, and that is, I'm sure, a permitted use, but although there may be, oh, arts and craft schools are a permitted use, all other services require a conditional use.
Well, I thought I was reading somewhere, um, arts and crafts are permitted, but all other educational services...
Right, require a conditional use permit.
Why?
Um, that is just taken from the community business zone. I'm not sure I even can speak, uh, to that. I, maybe they were thinking of, um, I, I don't know what, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
It just seems to me that we're, I'm not sure why we make it as a conditional use function if we're defining, it has to be storefront, which means it's going to have some limited size to it.
So are you, back to educational service? Your concern is about educational service?
Yes.
Yeah, uh-huh. I could see that.
Totally unrelated to any particular campus. And we don't know where remote learning and that type of stuff is going.
So it could be something...
Even if you call yourself a university, some of these remote ones are just storefront operations.
Yeah, it could be, you know, I'd, we'd be speculating to come up with what we think that means, but, you know, it could be more of the technical aspects of a certain type of degree like dental hygiene school or, you know. I'm sure there are very specific state requirements to be called a university or college, though, so... But, you know, they used to call the beauty schools a beauty college, you know, so I just think we need to be asking these questions now. It's okay.
No, I, I was wondering about, you say Bastier. Would they be, under this, allowed to, with a conditional use permit, do a, you know, a storefront learning center on 1E2? I don't know if that's even allowed under their, you know, agreement with the city or current land use, but that, that's one kind of, at least semi-obvious thing to at least ask.
Right, so the definition of college/university is on page four of your attachment four?
Yes.
So college/university means an establishment primarily engaged in providing academic courses and granting degrees above the high school diploma. College/university generally means the college/university campus. Off-site auxiliary facilities associated with a college or university are addressed under the appropriate land use listing for their individual operation. For example, an off-site affiliated bookstore would be considered retail sales. An off-site medical clinic would be considered healthcare and social assistance. So that's the distinction that I was trying to make. If you had, if Bastier University wanted to put in some small auxiliary facility in this area, it wouldn't be considered a college/university. It would be considered an educational service. Uh, well, depending on what it was, it could be retail, it could be healthcare and social assistance, it could be anything else that's a defined term, but it wouldn't be college/university.
Well, by this definition, which is fine. It could be, though, like you said, it could be, be labeled or branded as Bastier University bookstore.
Right, correct. Right, yeah, absolutely. So I think the point about why all educational services aren't permitted outright is a good one. And I think that that's worthy of consideration, whether in fact, why would we prohibit all ed-, or why would they all require a conditional use permit? I'm, I'm not sure. Maybe, I don't know that I can find the answer to that, um, but...
So would it be something like a, you know, a learning center, you know, like, um, for, for kids, for, you know?
Right, it could be a karate school, it could be, uh, you know, learn to...
A math learning center or a reading learning center.
Right, exactly.
You know, there, it would have a definition, but it wouldn't necessarily be a university campus.
Oh, no, definitely not.
You know, I can see what you're trying to define is, it's not like you couldn't have something like that in your neighborhood business zone. It just is going to require that it has a certain kind of use permit like any other business.
So the way it's defined is on page six of attachment four. Educational service means an institution that offers academic education, career and technical instruction, as well as schools or programs that offer tutoring or non-academic or self-enrichment classes, such as automobile driving and cooking instruction.
Good. That helps.
Does institution have a particular meaning?
No.
Okay, so it could be a business for profit.
Right, oh, yeah. Oh, definitely. Yeah.
I think maybe, and I don't have a direct recollection, recollection of this, but I think in the educational, uh, definition, I think we had a discussion about this. And it comes back to, there's such a wide variation of what could fit into that definition. You could have a very high-impact, high-traffic volume. Uh, you could have, if you had a beauty school in there, you're going to have fumes, and you're going to have equipment down to something very simple, which could be, I'm going to teach people how to speak French.
Sure.
You know, you've got a, you could have a potential here for a wide range of intensity of services, amount of parking that might be needed there. It may not be consistent with what we had in mind for that area. And I think with a conditional permit, you have the opportunity to go in and ask some questions of the city, to ask some questions, and, and, and put a filter on this to determine that specific facts, which you would have if you just permitted it outright.
You can make everything conditionally... You can make everything conditional use, because you've got all those same issues with almost any operation. High density, high intensity, high parking use. I mean, are we trying to preclude an, an Apple, or a Verizon, or Microsoft having their own win, window front stores, where they also do educational training, or? I, I'm just trying to make sure I understand that we aren't creating undue step.
Something like that would be retail, if they were, if they had a store.
Well, it may not even be-
And if they had education, then that would be a, um, accessory use. They could have a training, uh, operation, and if they did that, if, if it wasn't just an educational facility, yes, then under the way it's written, they would have to get a conditional use permit.
Does it bother you that they have to get a conditional use permit? I mean, are you objecting to the conditional use permit, or just that the city's involved at all?
And I'm sorry, am I misreading attachments one and two, where I'm showing educational service in the permitted column?
If, if you look at the footnote, it's in the permitted column, but then if you look at the footnote, it's, uh, in, for example, the, um, north area, the Juanita sub-area, then it is, arts and crafts schools are a permitted use, but all other educational services require a conditional use permit.
The question was raised exactly why I was making these comments.
Yeah, explain.
And I think I'm trying to let the market express itself more in as many areas that make sense to me, and I don't, I guess I'm not quite as fearful that it's going to get out of control. Maybe I'm just totally wrong on that.
I think you're probably right, just because it's very limited space. I mean, the footprint of those little zones is so small that the ideas we're tossing around that could potentially backfire on you, I just don't think they would. There's just not that much space there.
But I'm looking here at the size limitations, and that's one way to control how big the operation will be.
But it's because it's, it's, it's a way to describe what a neighborhood business zone looks like, you know? So if a developer goes into that property up there across from Arrowhead, there's already a description of what a neighborhood business zone building would encompass. So they're not going to put in a ten-story scrape, you know, on a very small footprint, it just would be cost prohibitive.
So, um, I, I'm listening to Dennis's concerns, and I think, I'm trying to think about the difference between, potentially between educational service and office, which has no size limitation, and then I'm thinking about retail and personal service, which do have size limitations. And I think my tendency would be to agree that educational service could be a permitted use. And then if you want more control of that, you could either move to something like a size limitation, or, um, or not.
And I, I'm speaking, because I'm really envisioning it becoming a multi-use facility, and I am concerned if, if that's where we're headed, that we permit that lower level to be used in as wide a variety as the community wants. You know, big operations won't necess, I mean, big companies won't necessarily look at the conditional use fees as expensive, but small mom-and-pop people will. And I actually see that as who we would like to encourage. That's where, um, the young entrepreneur will get started, or the immigrant, or, or whatever.
Sure.
But that's just sort of my commentary on that.
So I think the commission needs to perhaps make a motion or consider some sort of decision on this particular point?
On size limits in particular?
Or just the whole idea of educational service. I don't know, Dennis, if you want to make a motion, or, I, how you wish to approach it, but I feel like we're sort of trapped in a loop right here, and we have lots of decisions to make.
I move that we allow me, uh, educational services to be a permitted use in the north zone. Is that what you're looking for?
Well, I see it as being a permitted use in north or south.
So we have a motion on the floor. Uh, do we have a second for-
I'll amend the motion to include the south.
Okay.
That's, yeah.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion on that motion?
The only thing I'm, I'm having a little trouble with is the distinction for arts and crafts. I, I, I'm honestly just stuck on how it differentiates the nature of the business from one that was perhaps a mentoring, or, you know, maybe one of these Sylvan Learning Centers, ones where people could get academic help, or-
I, I think the motion is to do away with that.
Yeah, I understand, and, and-
And I, I truly don't know the history. It's an existing rule in the community business zone, and I wasn't here when that zone was created, so I, I really, I don't know what the motivation was.
So I don't need to beat myself up, or?
So you're good?
Yeah.
Anybody else's discussion? Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Nay? Carries unanimously?
Are we just killing the footnote?
Yeah.
Or changing it to, well, like-
No, you're just killing, you're just killing the footnote to say that educational services are permitted. That's what it would be.
Yeah, that's what we're, I think that does open the door a little bit wider.
So now, would you like us to, uh, to address the size limitations question that's on our screen?
Well, I think there's a size limitation, you've been kind of, you're still sort of dancing around where you are on automotive sales and service, too.
Right.
I think, so the question on automotive sales and service is, the question is, in the neighborhood business zone right now, it's permitted. We're recommending that it should be conditional, and so I think that's sort of where the discussion is, is whether, first of all, if you can all agree that it should be, there should be some allowance for it, which means that it wouldn't be prohibited. I haven't heard anybody say this evening it should be prohibited. So I think the discussion, policy discussion is around whether it should be outright permitted, or whether it should have some conditions to being permitted, and a conditional permit implies that it doesn't quite fit in the zone, and that there may be a need to impose some conditions to make it fit. That's the reason for, usually for a conditional use permit.
Right, but we would not address what those conditions are, that would come up in-
No, I'm, I'm just kind of saying that that's sort of the reason, so a permitted use is saying it, it's sort of, it fits well with the vision. Conditional use permit is saying it's kind of fits there, but we may have to put in some conditions to make it fit, whether, and, and the example that Laurie used was perhaps screening is one, one condition, so it's just as an example. So I think that's sort of where you need to sort of figure out then, is your perspective on how auto sales and service is allowed.
Could you either, can I ask a question?
Turn the slide to that.
Yeah, sure.
To add that motion, or that recommendation?
So currently, it's the same recommendation, both the north and the south, so-
Commissioner Mulcahy had a question, or a vote.
Yeah.
So since we have pre-existing businesses in automotive service in both districts, and if they were to continue as non-conforming, pre-existing, if a new business wanted to enter there and they received a conditional use permit to do so with conditions, whether those be screening, noise abatement, hours of operation?
Mm-hmm, it could be.
Is it legitimate to have two businesses in the same business district operating under different conditions? For example, if I opened up an auto repair service next to Steve's Auto Repair Service, who's there currently grandfathered in, non-conforming use, could I have conditions placed on me as a new business owner that don't apply to him?
Yes.
Yikes.
Happens, happens all the time.
Does it?
Especially in this industry.
Boy, I would jump up and down.
Yeah, I think it's just because you're not really thinking about the cost of opening that business, and that is an extremely low profit margin, and the only way the automotive aftermarket small business owner can exist is if they already have kind of a lock on the land and the actual access to a building that could accommodate what they do. It's cost prohibitive to create a new automotive on a, on a small scale, that's not a huge chain, or has some other funding behind it. And that's why the, it is a real question, because the service industries are sort of disappearing, but we still need them. And so by doing what we're doing, we're basically saying, you know, Kenmore doesn't want to, in the future, have this kind of small business owner in this industry. We're going to delegate that to the commercial, you know, automotive maker repair houses, like a Honda service dealer, or a Jaguar dealer, or whatever. It won't be a generalist who can work on any car. Does that make sense?
No, I, I, I assume there are-
It doesn't make sense, but it is reality.
Well, I, I only take my car to family-owned, independent, so I, I, I see what you're saying, and I believe it is the reality of the industry, but are, I assume there are business districts within Kenmore where it is a permitted use to open an auto repair service, right?
Right.
Yeah, and those are ones that are in industrial areas, or not near residential.
There's, I think regional business east is one area where it's permitted. Again, the, the businesses along 522 are considered existing legal, they can expand without having to get a conditional use permit. That's another kind of a subcategory. It's one we've tried to move away from, because it's tied to dates, and it's, uh, there's a difficulty of implementation, but it exists. So, again, I, I don't, from the staff recommendations perspective, the idea was not to make these businesses move out necessarily, it's more to rein in existing businesses, and then it's a question of weighing in the commissioner's minds whether, if, if an existing business wants to expand and they have to get a conditional use permit, is that so burdensome that it's a problem? I think that is kind of the critical question.
Your example is perfect, though, because you could have a symbiotic type of business that would want to move in next door to the repair shop, reupholstering, you know, classic car restorer, you know, whatever you could dream up. But, um, doing a conditional permit doesn't prohibit them from going in, it just gives the community an opportunity to limit what that's going to look like in a neighborhood business zone.
Mm-hmm. I don't know if it gives the community the opportunity to limit it, I think it gives us the opportunity to limit it. I think it gives the community the opportunity to give their voice and talk to the community development manager, we do or do not want this business here, right?
Right, or to suggest-
Which is a public process component, yeah, which there is not under the permitted-
Correct.
-section, that's an important distinction, I think. It does give the public the opportunity, the, the neighboring public, well, I guess anybody in the city-
Within a thousand feet typically, and there is a-
A thousand?
A thousand feet, people are mailed notice for a conditional use permit, and then it's published in the newspaper, and, um, and we have a listserv that notices go out to-
Right, so theoretically, any Kenmore resident could weigh in, correct?
Correct.
And be heard. That strikes me personally as a fair compromise, but I, you know, open it up to a motion from the colleagues, or further discussion?
I'm not sure I followed all of that conversation, but just to get a vote, I would vote that we move the auto services function into the permitted category, and then whatever appropriate footnote we want to do about screening, or size, or whatever, um, we, we can add that. Anyway, that's why-
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Okay. Uh, motion on the floor, do we have a, a second to that motion?
Hearing none, it's gone.
Hearing none, that motion is, um, is no longer. Would anybody else care to make a motion on this point?
I move that we accept the staff's recommendation that we make auto sales a conditional use.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Nay? Motion carries, four to one.
All right, so, did you want to talk multifamily?
Yes, please.
Bring it on.
All right, so multifamily was treated differently.
Can you, um, you can brush this green, or this blue?
I have, uh, okay, so this is for the north area. This is the one at northeast 175th Street. The recommendation is that you can still do multifamily in mixed use, and the way the city defines mixed use is that you actually can do mixed use in different buildings. So if you had a single site, if you put commercial in one part of the site, and you put multifamily in the other part of the site, that's still considered mixed use. It, I think we often think of traditional multifamily where, or mixed use, where you have some uses on the bottom and others on the top, and that may be what we want, but there is another option here. Uh, so, north, staff recommendation, you can't do standalone townhomes in this area, hoping to preserve it for other things, and you can only do multifamily if you're doing some other commercial, personal service, whatever your other use is. Uh, in the south area, the idea would be that you would retain the opportunity to do standalone townhomes, so it gives a little more flexibility in terms of residential use. Otherwise, you'd have to do it in that mixed use context.
Could you just briefly clarify what qualifies as mixed use? I think we all can envision, you know, the first floor, retail-
Right.
-with residential above it, um, can you sort of clarify what?
Right, it, uh, mixed use is actually a defined term, which is helpful. So, let me get to it here. Okay, mixed use development means a combination of residential and non-residential uses within the same building or site as part of an integrated development project with functional interrelationships and coherent physical design. So that's where, where I was saying that you think of mixed use as, you know, stacked on, the, the residential stacked on top of the other use, that's the traditional model. Uh, but the, uh, Kenmore code has this other provision that you can do it, and in fact, there's an example up on northeast 181st Street, where there are townhomes on the side of the property that faces the lake, and yet on the 181st side of that same property, there's a commercial office space.
Right, right, there is.
Right.
It's next door to the church, just-
I think it's just east, it might be down a couple.
So I'm looking at the, uh, the zoning map here, it looks like on the, um, the south one, it's surrounded by R18, is that correct?
It, it's definitely multifamily.
Multifamily.
Yeah.
And it's R24 on the north-
Which is a higher density multifamily.
Higher density, right, okay. Which is why you're proposing to allow standalone townhomes on the south side?
In the south-
To be consistent with the neighboring zoning, is that?
Right, and also, my impression from the conversation at the last meeting was that, my impression was that commissioners felt that it was different in character, that it really already was more integrated or could be more integrated into the residential area, that it didn't have this relationship to the larger commercial area.
We did agree on that, I believe. Any discussion on this point, on how we address multifamily in these two areas?
Can I just ask a question for clarification? So a standalone townhome could just be a single family that lives in that?
No.
It still has to be multifamily, multi-residence?
It couldn't be just a single townhome because that would be a single-family residence.
Okay, I get it.
It has to be connected.
It has to be like a-
Right.
Okay.
And in the south area, this is not a change. This is the current-
Code.
Code.
Okay.
The north area is a different. The staff recommendation for the north area would say, no, you can't do standalone townhomes.
Okay.
So that's a change. That would be a change.
Okay.
And is that because we want to promote higher density there?
I think because the notion of using that particular area just for townhomes was not as supported. That was my impression, but again, it's the commission's choice.
Like it was a density question?
Yeah.
We're thinking that's going to be more compatible with what we think about the debt.
Are there height limits associated with either of these proposals?
Right, yeah, both, well, we haven't talked about height limits at all. So that's something that the commission could look to if changes were desired. I think it's probably a 35-foot height limit, but it may not be.
For any development or just multifamily?
So in the neighborhood business zone currently, there's a 35-foot height limit. And you can increase your height limit if you have greater setbacks from the property lines. And if you're doing a mixed use or a standalone townhome development, you can go up to 45 feet.
Okay. Is that the standard four-story?
Forty-five feet would be kind of a tight four-story, but yeah.
Okay, so it'd be more like a, like-
If you had a-
What's the Spencer 68? What's that?
In terms of height?
Height?
It's 65 or 70, I think.
Okay, so in the neighborhood zones, they're a little shorter.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, probably four stories.
Would you describe again what a standalone townhouse is?
Right, so a standalone townhouse is a dwelling unit that's attached by common wall to another dwelling unit. It's not stacked. It's side by side.
So if those whole lots could have, be fully developed with standalone townhouses?
Right, right, correct.
So then it wouldn't necessarily be offering community businesses on a daily basis. It would just be residential.
For the south subarea, right, and that, as I said, is the current zoning. The north subarea, I'm recommending against that.
Right, because it's already, it's already more commercial than the Arrowhead properties, right?
For the most part, it's more, yeah.
Okay.
But in the south subarea, if standalone townhomes are permitted, I mean, the implication of that would be certainly that, for example, the vacant restaurant that's there, or the vacant lot, if it were cleaned up, that there could be a townhome project on those. And those are pretty big lots, so that's the implication. They could do that under current zoning.
They could do it today.
Correct.
So that's not a change?
No change.
In fact, on one side there, you've already have standalone townhouses.
Oh, on the-
On the neighboring property.
South of the-
Right, correct.
Zone we're talking about, okay.
Right.
Okay.
I guess one of the reasons I like the idea or find the townhome option attractive in that south area, if you look at the properties around there already, they're all residential, and they're all relatively low-rise.
Right, right.
Stick a 35 footer on either one of those corners, it's going to be-
It's going to stick out.
You're going to be blocking the sun for anybody who lives in the vicinity.
Yeah, but that's the case now, right? I mean, people could, yeah, there's, it wouldn't change, the height limits aren't changing.
No, no, I'm just saying, that's one of my concerns about having a multifamily with the 35-foot height limit in there. Wouldn't really be consistent with what's in that neighborhood right now or what's built there. How that might change in the future, I don't know, but-
Would you want to, could, would you consider, is that-
Within your purview to look at-
Available to the 35-foot height limit? Is that something that we could-
Yeah, no, the whole zone is open. We just have not discussed development standards yet. We, but that-
That would be a separate process.
Right, that's something else we need to discuss.
As part of this project?
Yeah.
So that's something we could at least look at? Mike, is that what you're indicating?
Yeah, I think we should. If you think about the visual look going down 1E2 Drive and what that would look like for a 35-foot.
I- I will say that 35-foot is the lowest height limit in the city, that every single-family zone has a 35-foot height limit. So if you were thinking of going below that, that would really be unusual, particularly in a sort of semi-commercial zone. I just throw that out there.
Remind us of what an example of a 35-foot is?
Pardon me?
An example of what a 35-feet would look like, an existing structure?
Like a two-story home?
Right.
Okay.
With a pitched roof, maybe? So basically, what we have to think about in this discussion and then make a decision about is, do we want that particular intersection to just be residential, or do we want to preserve the community business aspect of it?
Correct. And whether, and maybe you want to think about them separately. Are you okay prohibiting townhomes on the north part, but you want to retain the ability to do townhomes on the south part? That's the basic question.
Go ahead, Dennis.
I think I would prefer we did not do standalone townhouses, but that we just do a multifamily use in a mixed use. Now, that doesn't mean you couldn't have standalones as long as it was a coordinated development elsewhere on the site. I just want to make sure we maintain some commercial, I mean, you know, neighborhood-type business availability.
So basically, for the south side, you wanting to preserve the fact that there are some mixed-use businesses there?
Yes.
And you don't want it to become just residential? So we just need to make a motion, that says that?
You want to make a motion to that?
So moved.
Can you, can you make a motion?
I think, basically, I would strike the standalone townhouses, but only allow multifamily in a mixed use.
In both zones?
Well, that would be my position, but we've already dealt with the north zone, so we're dealing with the south zone now.
We don't have a motion on that.
Yeah, we don't have a motion for that.
We don't.
But we can, we can certainly, you can certainly make whatever motion you choose.
I make that same motion for north and south, but I think you should vote on it separately.
Okay. Do we have a second for that motion?
Well, do we do discussion before a second, or do we do a second and then discussion?
Second and then discussion, is my understanding. Do we have a second for that motion? Going once, going twice? We do not have a second.
No discussion needed.
So would someone else like to make a motion to that point, or?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the staff's recommendation for the north part.
Okay, which is no standalone townhomes, correct?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that motion?
Sure. So, Mike, you think that's a viable business area and that, because I think what you're saying when you say that, right, is that you want to, you kind of want to protect the viability of that as a business area and not let the market force. If the market determines that standalone townhomes or even residential houses are the right use of that land, you think there's a better public use in that space as a viable commercial zone? And I'm not challenging, I'm just asking you to kind of speak to that a little bit.
Personally, I would have no problem with allowing townhomes in the north section, but what I'm thinking about is, again, the concept that that area is very shortly going to be contiguous to the rest of the downtown, and that's an area where we're trying to build the option for density. So I think a mixed-use multifamily, allowing that as an option on that spot would preserve both the commercial, but also give you residential density that you wouldn't have with standalone townhouses.
Yeah, I think the density is already there. I think everything that surrounds that node is fairly dense.
Right. So you'd just be allowing that to be consistent with the surrounding area and with the plan of building up density in the central area.
So we're really just excluding one type of-
Yeah, well, you're excluding a low-density-
A low-density.
Option. And by building up that additional density, you're also making that commercial that may or may not be viable, more viable in a mixed use, because you need to have that density in order to support the businesses.
Yeah. I like the idea of business owners taking a chance there, right? And serving that higher-density area with businesses, whether it be restaurants or retail or, you know, and employing people. So I like that, I like that idea quite a lot, and I wish them all the best. Having lived in the, and we'll leave it at that, because I like, I just wanted to hear you talk about that a little bit more. I like what you had to say.
Any further discussion on the motion? Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So that addresses the north zone. I believe we need a motion for the south zone. Open the floor to that.
Well, I'll make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation that standalone townhouses be permitted. Otherwise, multifamily must be mixed use.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay, so tackled auto sales and service, tackled multifamily. There, I know there's still some things hanging out there, size of retail, educational service, et cetera. So I'm not forgetting that we have to ask those questions. So these were the two remaining questions for sort of this initial use discussion, and I should say that what we hope to do as a next phase is to take these, this sort of vision and the use, preliminary use concepts to the public, to get some feedback from them about that. And so, again, if we finish this tonight, we can move straight to that at the beginning of June. If we don't, it's fine, and we'll meet on the 16th and continue going through, going through things. This doesn't make any difference, one way or the other.
Okay, would that be in the form of a public hearing, then, in early June?
No. This is more the intent of getting some feedback from the public in a less formal setting. And some of the things we've been talking about as staff are, you know, there's always the open house format, but these are such small areas, there's some sense that maybe we need to go out to those areas, and we need to be present in that area with the information for the business owners, or if they want to set up meetings with us here, however it might work. I mean, I think it can be a more personal level of public involvement for at least the property owners in those areas, because it's so small. And then the formal public hearing would happen after you had considered the public comment and decided whether you were going to tweak your recommendations, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, well, it looks like we have the question about size limitations on some uses. Are you suggesting that there's going to be a sort of a blanket size limitation on all these various use tables, or for different ones, different sizes? What are you thinking about?
Right, so in the north area, which I modeled off the community business chart, there already is a limitation. It's in the footnotes, and it is, if you look at, sorry, it is footnote, or it's under retail sales, footnote two. Each use is limited to a maximum of 5,000 square feet per use and 15,000 square feet total contiguous. And that same footnote applies to retail sales and personal service, and eating and drinking place. So, again, this is modeled off the community business zone, and so they have this limitation. So what you end up with is smaller storefronts. Now, the point I want to make again is that I looked at the uses that are out there now, and they all meet that standard. So it's kind of, I guess, reinforcing the existing pattern for those retail, personal service, et cetera, uses at their smaller scale. And that same notion could be extended to educational service. It doesn't apply to office, interestingly, so that you could have a large office, which may be a good thing. So the question is, do you like that limitation to keep the fabric smaller, or do you want to do away with that limitation in the north? Or if you like it, do you want to extend it to the south?
I'll start, just, I think it's, I think it's good policy. I think the limitations here speak to the type of business you'd want to have in there. So I would propose keeping it the same in both of those zones.
And this would be just if it was a mixed-use-
No.
-project?
Uh, no. The limitation is assessed by use, so it applies to, it's, I can tell you exactly which ones. Eating and drinking place, personal service, retail sales. I guess those are the three that it applies to.
Okay.
Were there educational services?
It doesn't currently apply to educational service, but it could.
Does anybody want to make a motion to that effect, or you want to discuss a little more? I think it's a good policy idea, too, to keep it for smaller types of uses.
I'll make a motion that we accept the staff's recommendation and extend the existing site limits on the north zone to the south. site limits on the north zone to the south zone.
Second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have motion and second, any discussion on that?
Are you intentionally leaving out the educational services from?
I don't think they...
I think it can...
They, yeah, it currently is not on there, so you can either make a separate motion about that, or you can incorporate it into this motion, whatever you want to do.
Are you thinking we should include the site education within the limits?
I think so, that was my thinking, that you wanted to have small neighborhood-type services and...
I'll accept that amendment.
Okay.
Okay, the motion has been amended, the seconded motion has been amended, do we need another second? Anybody know, Robert's rules of order?
Who seconded it? I seconded it. I think she can say it's okay, if she thinks it's okay.
We amended the motion, and I second that it was amended.
There we go.
So now the motion can be voted on.
That's good enough, true.
Good enough, okay. Motion and second, on the amended motion to include educational service facilities, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay, motion carries.
I know, so for one reason... Do you think this is a sign? So, the one remaining topic, and you can decide if you want to take it up tonight, I mean, we'll still have some things to discuss even after we finish this use discussion, has to do with outdoor storage, do you want to tackle that topic tonight, do you want to save it, and we can look at it again when we come back and discuss development standards?
I'd recommend that we table that topic and talk about it with our standards that would apply to these neighborhood business zones. Because it's kind of a aesthetic type of standard.
Right.
And I agree with that, any other thoughts on that?
We can't run the table on the agenda tonight, or Doug?
We got to keep our chair happy, so, okay.
Okay. So, great, hard work, anything else, and I should say, this is not the recommendation that's going to council, I mean, I suppose it could be, this is just kind of this preliminary thing that we're going to send out into the community and see the reactions and hear from the owner, property owners, those who have their businesses there and the surrounding residents, and then with that feedback, then you guys can take these topics up again, and we also still need to do, look at development standards.
Sure.
So, any last things you want to discuss before we talk about doing this little community involvement thing? It's totally out of control. Did you make that call? Oh, good, I was like, whoa!
So have we, okay, let me, I'm sorry, this may be, did we then, we haven't yet adopted this whole table, correct?
No, you haven't, and...
We've just done these discreet sort of pieces of it, okay, so we can come back to any, I didn't have anything in particular, but I just wanted to clarify that.
It would be very helpful to know if there are other concerns about the table, I know, Dennis, you expressed some concern about college/university, I don't know if our discussion of educational service and how you treat auxiliary uses? Okay. Okay, so...
I had, I don't know if it's a concern, standalone parking, apparently that can only be a commuter lot if it's affiliated with some other type of use, right, so in other words, somebody couldn't plunk a, you know, a pay parking...
Right, it would be like a diamond lot, you couldn't do a diamond lot, no.
You couldn't do that on its own, but it could be as part of some other...
Right, like if it were like a, I suppose, like a park, almost like a park-and-ride, if people were needing someplace to park, and then they were walking down to five-two-two or something like that.
And parking will be part of the development standards, parking standards, or?
The part, we won't tackle parking, individual use parking standards, we certainly can talk more about standalone parking if that's an issue.
I just wanted to clarify what that would allow or not allow, so, so I'm good for now. Okay, any further business before the commission? Staff, anything further before we?
No, just this presentation, part of Affordable Housing Week, the city council passed a resolution about that, so on the fifteenth at seven o'clock, you could formally cancel your meeting on the sixteenth, if you want to do that.
There's nothing for us to do, really, right?
Well, you did what we set out for you to do, good job.
Does anybody want to meet on the sixteenth? You can't get your cookie until we...
Only if there's cookies, right?
No, only until we cancel the meeting, okay. Do we have to make a motion to cancel the meeting?
Yeah, that'd be best.
Do we have a motion to cancel the meeting on the sixteenth?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
So your next meeting then is June sixth, and so what we'll try to aim for is sort of maybe an open house on the sixth, just to, so you can be present, and if there are people here, you can hear what they have to say, we'll probably give some sort of a little introductory presentation, that's more for the broader community, and then, again, we'll try to do this more targeted outreach to the business community, so that'll be June sixth, sometime that week, and then on June twentieth, we need to reschedule that meeting, and the question is whether there is availability the next night, which is Wednesday, June twenty-first. So if you have an answer tonight, that'd be great, if not, we can ask Bridget maybe to send out a request and see if we would have enough participation to move it to the Wednesday, the twenty-first, instead of Tuesday, the twentieth.
Yeah, considering two of our members aren't here, I think that would be the better approach, so...
Okay.
I just know that already at this point, I won't be able to attend either of those nights in June.
Oh, okay.
But, just a conflict.
Yeah, great, okay, so Bridget will send out a request, and we'll figure out whether the twenty-first.
Okay, sounds good. Any other business? We're adjourned.